All right. Hi there. My name is Zajer Martinez again with the Washington Voting Project. I'm here with a candidate for Chelan County Commissioner Tiffany Garing. Ms. Garing, it's very nice to be here with you today, of course, over Zoom unfortunately, but nonetheless, very exciting to talk to you.
Thank you for having me.
Fantastic, fantastic. So obviously, this is sort of an interview, but I kind of want to make sure it's less just me asking you questions and you responding in a campaign-y way and more, you know, getting to know you, having a conversation. A little background on this project, you know, I, this kind of started with me not knowing any of the candidates who are really running locally in elections. And so it's great to, you know, see your face, talk to you and hear about all the issues. And I'd love to have that all encapsulated in today's conversation. So yeah. But hopefully, at the end of the day, we, myself and of course, the broader community will be able to learn some more about you.
Sounds good.
Alrighty. Well, we can hop right into it. And I guess I'm just curious, you know, have you always lived in Chelan County? If not, how did you come to call it home? And kind of how'd you grow up? What's your, what's your life story, I guess, in a couple of minutes, right?
I actually grew up in Brewster, so not far from Chelan County, but Okanagan. And my dad was a teacher and a police officer, my mom, a nurse. I graduated from high school and went away to college at Seattle Pacific University, where I got a degree in business administration. And then moved away to LA for a few years. I wanted to experience big city life. And eventually realized that being home was my priority. So I moved to Chelan in 2005, and I've been here ever since.
Fantastic, fantastic. That's great. Those experiences, you know, moving away, moving to the big city. I'm curious how, you know, living in those different environments, eventually settling back again in Chelan County in a more rural area, how does influence kind of the decisions or policy ideas that you think of on an everyday basis? You know, do you think about it as kind of rural versus urban versus somewhere in between? Or not? Is it just kind of like all the experiences meshed together?
Uh, no, I mean, I, there's definitely a difference, you know, we have issues with affordable housing in Chelan County. And I think there are those issues everywhere, but I think they're heightened here. And even more so with COVID, a lot of people have realized that they can work from home. So they're getting out of the bigger cities and moving to places like Chelan or Leavenworth or Wenatchee. Just because the quality of life here, I think, is so amazing. I knew that moving to Chelan and starting a family, I would never want to raise my kids in like LA. And there's nothing wrong with LA. I loved the time that I spent there. But like I said, the quality of life, I wanted something different for my kids. I wanted what I had when I grew up in that small town life. And knowing that, you know, as teenagers, if my kids sneak out, I'm going to know about it before they get home. So and I will have that here.
Right, right, right. Those are some great reasons, of course. I'm curious, what other kind of, you know, work experience, other, other general experience do you have? That kind of contributes to you eventually running for office like you are right now? And kind of how has that impacted how you see the management of Chelan County?
So when I moved back to, well, when I moved to Chelan in 2005, I was two years out of college and I started a sales career at Icicle Broadcasting, also known as Cozy here in Lake Chelan. And I was a sales manager there for almost eight years. And now I am the COO and Sales Manager at the Lake Chelan Chamber of Commerce. And so since 2005, I've been working with small businesses and also in the tourism industry. So it's really given me a good basis for understanding the struggles that small businesses have. And then also looking at our economy. So you're an economics major and looking at issues within the county, like short-term rentals and how those dollars impact our economy and a growth mindset and building. And we don't want to lose the uniqueness that we have. We don't want to grow at any cost. But also growth is inevitable, and I don't see it as a bad thing. And so I do, I do think that we need to be careful how we're moving forward, what choices we're making today. Because I would like to retire here. And if, if Chelan or Leavenworth or Wenatchee are going to turn into a Seattle, I'm not going to want to retire here. So I think, I think our decisions we make today are very important for the future of Chelan County.
So what decisions, excuse me, what decisions does that translate into you pushing for? Or what policies or ordinances does that, you know, kind of lead you to support?
I am a huge supporter of affordable housing. And there's a group here in Chelan called the Chelan Valley Housing Trust that are doing an amazing job at the grassroots level. They procured, procured funding from a lot of different sources and they've already started building. And it's great because these homes are, are created so people can buy them for $200,000 and then sell them. And they're creating equity as they're living in, in them. And the housing trust actually owns the land. So huge proponent for affordable housing. And when I look at why other communities in Chelan County aren't doing that, I think that probably some county codes need to change. So regulations aren't so stringent, meaning that more dwellings are able to be put on parcels. And looking at zoning, and I, and I'm not saying that needs to be done everywhere, but in certain spots, I think that could be really beneficial for affordable housing. And then looking at short-term rentals, I know it's a really hot button issue for people, and it has been for several years. I'm a firm believer in private property rights, and I have a hard time creating more regulations. I think, I tend to think the less government, the better. But with that said, the county already has regulations in place for short-term rentals. And I think that we should first start with enforcement before we create 20 new pages of regulations. We should enforce what we already have on the books and see how that goes. Like I said before, creating more code.
So I have a question based off kind of what you said there, enforcement. Is there, is, is, are the current codes not being enforced in your mind? I mean, to be honest, I know nothing about this, so.
They're not. And even when they are, for example, say there's a short-term rental and they get, somebody calls in a noise complaint. So they're partying at 2:00 AM. The police will go there, and even if they write a ticket for the noise complaint, it's a $36 infraction. So if I am renting, say I'm having a bachelorette party, and I have 15 of my closest friends, and we're renting this house for $5,000 a week. $36?
Dropping the bucket, right?
Yeah, I'd say, we'll see you tomorrow, officer, with, with your next ticket. So I think that, that not only, I, I do think that enforcement needs to be done more. And it has moved, it used to be in the Community Development Department. It's now being moved to the Sheriff's Office, which I think will help, right? Because when an officer shows up at your door, that's different than a code enforcer, essentially, right? So, but I also think that the fines need to be increased significantly. And I think that the owners of the short-term rentals should also be getting a fine. So say, hey, a noise, um, fine, we say we raise it to 500 bucks. You give a ticket to those short-term renters that are there, and I guarantee they're not going to want to see you again. So they're going to behave a little better. And then send it also, send the ticket to the owner of the actual property. And then they will start learning not to rent to problem groups or not to rent to huge amounts of people. So I think that, that enforcement is just really the key to effect change at this point.
Right. That's a, that's a really interesting point of view on that. I mean, again, like, not something I'm super familiar with, but uh, very, yeah, very interesting. So I, I think that kind of leads us perfectly into the big question that I ask or that I have in my mind when I'm talking to commissioners, which is hardly, it seems like hardly anyone actually knows what commissioners do or maybe the power that they have. I've tried to do my research on it. And, you know, talking to people, it seems like hardly anyone, again, knows who their commissioners are, really knows what they have responsibility over. And looking into it a bit, it seems like you guys have, or, you know, commissioners have a pretty good deal and range of responsibilities and potential power that they can kind of use to influence the trajectory of the county. So what are some other things that maybe people wouldn't know too much about when it comes to what commissioners have responsibility over?
You know, I, I think that is an incredibly true statement because I really didn't know before I started researching what our county commissioners did. They seem a little far removed, which is what I appreciate about your project, right? Because you're trying to help people understand not only who they're voting for, but what they're voting for. So I think, I think it's really important to understand. I think county commissioners do so much that it is unbelievable to me. So first of all, they manage a budget for all of the elected. So the sheriff, the, the auditor, the treasurer, so all these different elected officials come, present their budgets. And the commissioners currently manage an over $40 million budget, which is not peanuts, right? That's all right. That's a lot of tax dollars. And you would think that people would be more well-informed about what their tax dollars are being spent on. They also manage all of the different community departments. So community roads, any public works in the county. There's community development and planning. So if you, for example, are building a home in the county and you're not in the city, you're going to the county for permits. There's the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department is one of the largest because there are several cities within our county that do not have a city police department.
Right.
So the county manages the jail. It's a regional jail and justice center. And the county also manages things like Olmee Gardens. They manage Wenatchee River Park. You know, there's the WSU Extension Office, the County Fair. So there, I mean, there are so many things that the county is involved in. And then the commissioners are also required to sit on several different boards. And they kind of divide those responsibilities up, but just some of the boards that they sit on, they sit on the link board. They sit on aging and adult care, the Chelan Douglas Health District Board, Chelan Douglas Transportation Council. So when you ask, you know, what is it that a county commissioner does? Basically, county commissioners are as involved as we can be with everything that's going on in the county. You know, they're, they maintain excellent partnerships with, with all elected officials. So mayors, city councils, the port, the different chambers throughout the, the communities. So there, it's real, the commissioners are really an integral part of all of the different communities in Chelan County that they serve.
Totally, totally. No, no, I mean, I, the, the better the explanation, you know, I think the better informed we all will be. And that was a fantastic explanation. So, um, yeah, that is, that is fantastic. So I guess hopping into some things that have happened recently, of course, the last seven months have been some of the, you know, craziest times I've certainly ever seen in my life for a lot of ways. And I think one of the biggest things unanimously is, is the pandemic that we're currently in, you know, COVID. First of all, I'm curious how in your eyes, as a candidate, you know, for, for a commissioner spot, how the pandemic has affected Chelan County?
I think it's hugely impacted Chelan County in a lot of different ways. Financially, of course. So we have lost a significant amount of sales and lodging tax because people weren't able to travel here. And a lot of that time were in our biggest tourism months. And so for Chelan and Leavenworth, that's definitely impacted businesses. I would say that, that also on a mental health standpoint, it has been incredibly harmful for a lot of people because it's healthy to interact, you know? It's healthy to hug people and be able to look people in the eye and see a smile even, as something as simple as that. And so I think it's been really, really difficult, especially for people who suffer from depression or mental illness. And then I think it's been also difficult on those, on the elderly. I have a friend whose wife is in an assisted living facility. And she has gone downhill because she's not been able to interact with the other residents because they're worried about obvious transmission of COVID. But it's, it's been very detrimental to her health. And then, you know, also the, the young generation, our kids, and not being able to be in sports or band or drama or even just seeing their friends at school. And I understand the risk. I know COVID is real. I'm not trying to downplay that. I had, I have a great uncle who recently passed from it, and his wife also has it. So I understand the risks. But I feel like we really need to be creative about how to open back up safely. Because I don't think that COVID is just going to disappear. And I know the steps that we've been making are, are helping our numbers go down. But, um, you know, it's been months and months and people are growing weary. So I would, I would love to see a little more control at the local level. Just because we know our county, we know our towns and our people so much better than our governor does. And not to say, um, that he didn't do and that he's not doing the best that he can under the circumstances. But, uh, I think that, that we could definitely move out of Phase 1.5 and do so safely. You know, I mean, if Costco can operate safely or Home Depot, I think we can, I think we can figure it out. Schools are a little trickier.
Totally. Yeah, I mean, it's a, such a, such a big challenge with all that. And I totally understand what you're saying. I guess narrowing it back down into the commissioner position, though, I'm curious what kind of power you have during the pandemic right now? Like, what, what can you guys do or what can commissioners do? And I guess an extension of that, what would you do if elected to try to alleviate those issues? Working within the framework, you know, the, the boundaries that you have?
Yeah. So something else that commissioners do that I didn't mention in my laundry list is they advocate at the state level. So they're working often with our state representatives and our state senator. And, um, what commissioners can do on a state level right now is advocate for our county, talk to the governor. But you will find out, I'm sure, if you're going to be interviewing Representative Steele, Representative Gainor, Senator Hawkins, you will find that the line of communication for those gentlemen has not been open. So they will be on calls with the governor and they will be muted. He will give a, a talk and they're not allowed to ask questions. So there's not, I don't feel like a lot of, a lot we can do at this point at the local level because we don't have the power to do so. All we can do as commissioners is work with our local health district and really the doctors that sit on that board and that we trust are making important decisions for our county based on their knowledge. So aside from doing that and, and, you know, cutting, cutting spending and, and really focusing on what we can do for next year's budget, at the state level right now, we're kind of at a standstill, which is unfortunate.
Totally. I mean, yeah, I mean, definitely sounds like a challenge that you're facing. I guess going into that, that, that budget deal though, what, I mean, do you have any ideas on things you would like to prioritize to keep funding or things that are high priority to lose funding? Or, or, you know, have their funding diminished in any way? You have kind of like a checklist of things that you want to get done on, on that financial end?
Uh, well, probably like most politicians, I know where I want more money to go. But yeah, I think, so what the commissioners have decided, I have been attending sessions since January and I attend as many sessions as I can on Mondays and Tuesdays. They started budget discussions earlier this year than they ever have before. And I think that will be extremely beneficial. And what they have decided is they've talked to all the different elected officials and departments and asked that they make a 10% cut to their budget. What I love about them doing that is they're not unilaterally making a decision and cutting people's budgets where maybe personnel would be lost, which I think personnel is the lifeblood of any company. So I like that the people who are closest, you know, whether they're the electeds or the people overseeing those departments, they actually get to make those decisions on their own and then come to the commissioners about that. So, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the budget at all. It is a bear, to say the least. I have been trying to understand it and when we do the, there's budget workshops coming up and I will be attending those because there's so many different funds. So for example, um, a real estate excise tax is taken for the county. And it goes into a specific fund and has to be used on, spent on specific things. So I don't understand what all those laws are yet because there's so many funds, which is why I can't say, yes, I want to cut X, because I don't even know if it can be cut, right? So I can guess all day long, but that doesn't help anyone. So until I'm able to sit in those budget workshops and really understand what money has to be allocated to certain, certain places, I won't be able to, to tell you where I want to cut.
Totally. No, that, that makes, that makes a ton of sense. Thank you for being honest with that and for, you know, stressing the importance of, of being educated about the budget and such, you know? I appreciate that. Um, so I was looking at your camp's campaign website earlier today in preparation for this conversation. And I, you know, I noticed you have a whole tab on, on mental health. And you've obviously mentioned that before in this interview. I feel like that's not always something that, speaking personally from my own experience, I have really seen stressed by politicians in Chelan County. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing or anything. But I, you know, it's, it's, I guess, wonderful for me to see that on, on, on your, you know, campaign website. I'm curious though, you know, you say you don't know exactly what the solution is, of course. And again, thank you for being honest with that. That's a, I think that's a great jumping off point for all of this. But what are, I guess, what are some ideas that have been floating around your, your mind? Some things that have caught your eye, maybe that have led you to have this entire tab for, for, for mental health? And, and some potential solutions, some things that you might consider?
I really think that a good start is creating a facility for people who struggle with mental health issues. And Kevin Overbay, Commissioner Overbay, has a vision. And I actually very much support his vision that we've been needing to build a new jail for a long time. And no one wants to pay and no one wants to build a new jail because it's not fun, right? It's like having to spend money on a vacuum.
Right.
You don't want to spend $600 on a vacuum, just like you don't want to pay to house criminals, right? I get it. But I also want to be safe and as do you, I'm sure. And you want your family to be safe. And so we have to have a place for people who break the law to be housed, just plain and simple. So Kevin's idea is with a new jail being built, which it really was not set up ideally in the first place, that the old building could be used as a mental health facility. And I'm sure, as you saw on my website, when I toured the jail, over 70% of the inmates there were mentally ill. And to me, that means they don't belong in jail. They're not getting the help that they need. And even though the, the county staff at the jail is amazing and the nurses, they're just, they're amazing. They cannot treat them how they need because that, that's not what they are. They're in jail, right? So these people need help, not incarceration. So I would love to see a new facility built is ideally what I'd like to, to have come to fruition in the next couple of years would be the goal. There's no, there's definitely not enough, um, facilities for mental health anywhere in our valley. And rather than look at it as, oh, well, the states, the state, that's the state's responsibility. Well, no, these are our neighbors. They're our friends, their families, you know? I, I know, I, I have friends that have mentally ill children, parents, you know? So I think that if we all search in our own lives, you could say, well, yeah, we know people. And yeah, we don't want them to suffer, you know? So I think it's part of, of taking care of our own and taking care of the people we love and the people we know. And, and I, I just don't think that jail is the appropriate place for them to go.
Totally, totally. Um, yeah, that was really insightful. Thank you very much. So pivoting a little bit, I guess, out of perspective of Chelan County and I guess saying in it a little bit, I, I wanted to talk just briefly about political polarization. Obviously, you know, living in these times, you know, the last 10, 20 years, you know, Americans in general have a generally low trust in the media and politicians, um, stuff like that, you know? Polls have been showing that all of that has been on the, you know, on, on the decline. And I'm curious, first of all, if you've seen that at all in your campaign or in your reflections in, in Chelan County?
I, I absolutely have. Um, first of all, I don't understand why the, the commissioner's seat, why you have to declare. I think it's strange because, you know, at the county commissioner level, we're not really dealing with most social issues, you know? We're not, we're not dealing with abortion. We're not dealing with, um, human rights of any sort, you know? That, that's just not something that we deal with at our level. So, and those tend to be the most polarizing for people and understandably. I have from both sides been very surprised. So with, with the Democrats, a lot of them are supporting me because I'm a woman, which I appreciate. And I do believe there need to be more women in office, absolutely. which I appreciate. Uh, and I do believe there need to be more women in office, absolutely. But I, I also would hope that they learn more about me and know that it's so much more than me just being a woman. Uh, and then on the Republican side, there are some Republican groups who don't think that I am Republican enough. And I've yet to find out what this means. So, uh, the only, you know, I feel like I'm earning a vote, I'm earning votes one by one as I get out and meet people because it's so strange to campaign during COVID. But the only people that know me or know anything about me are through things like this, right? So, and if they see something that says, oh, Tiffany's, Tiffany's more independent than she is Republican. It's like, well, what did I say? You know, I'd love to explore further. So I, uh, I, I absolutely agree with your statement. I think the media used to report the news. And now I find very few that are unbiased. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't watch the news. And then I have, I have friends and family, you know, I have, both my aunts are very, very liberal. My mom and dad are very, very conservative, you know, and as a commissioner, you represent everyone. So I may, ye- yes, I'm a Republican and yes, I have, uh, Republican views, I guess you could say. But ultimately it comes down to making decisions that are best for the majority of people in our county. So I think it's just important to listen to all sides of an issue. And it's not just me making a decision, you know, that's why there are three commissioners and the balance I think is incredibly important. So Commissioner Bogart is, and he ran as an independent and I think he's a Democrat. Kevin is very much conservative, Commissioner Overbay. And I would say I'm a moderate. You know, and I think that, that I add a good balance to the board. So I think, I think when you allow politics to come into things, it, uh, it creates problems. I think that every situation you need to go into looking at as a conversation and potential solutions rather than pointing fingers and you know, trying to figure out what side someone's on, I just think is, uh, ridiculous and unproductive.
Thank you for that again. Yeah. Um, no, it's a, it's a wonderful take on it, I think. Um, and actually answered some of the follow-up questions I had, uh, while you were saying it. So thank you. All right. Well, obviously I don't want to take too much of your day, so I'll just, I just have kind of one last question and then, uh, and then that'll probably be it. I, I'm curious, within all this, you, you're very passionate about a variety of issues, obviously, and, and very well versed on, 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 on many. I'm curious what you think the, the number one most important or most pressing issue is to Shalane County right now?
Uh, I think COVID recovery for sure. I think we, we really have to, uh, know when it's the right time to open back up and invite people back in. I think, um, getting safely to the next phases is incredibly important. Managing our budget well at the county level and then knowing that once we are able to invite people back and invite people out and about, that we are helping our businesses advertise that. And, you know, I know that places like Trails have been doing really well because people can be outside, which is awesome. But then we want people to, you know, go to our restaurants and stay at our hotels and, and come visit what, you know, what we love. So I think those dollars, and there are lodging tax dollars to be spent for advertising. And they're pretty significant. I mean, the lodging tax dollars are, are much more than what's spent on mental health, for example. So I think we need to, to be using that money wisely to advertise and when the timing is right.
Fantastic. Um, great to hear. Okay. Well, that kind of concludes all the questions I had. Um, thank you so much, Tiffany, for, for, you know, taking the time out of your day again to, to have this conversation. I thought it was great and, uh, I hope everyone can learn a lot about you from, from watching this video.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.